Mr. Wright, pay attention. I'm ready. So, welcome. Tonight is Thursday, September 27th. We are in the Berlin Room at District Offices. And Mrs. Hatfield, will you call the roll?
Yes, please. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll now take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
For a second.
Mrs. Hatfield? Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, please welcome Jessica Timmons from Olentangie Orange High School. She will be doing our first presentation this evening on "The Pioneers for Pollinators."
Yay!
And we're excited to hear about this.
Hi, I'm excited to share.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I'm supposed to do this. Okay. So, my name is Jessica Timmons, and I'm a teacher of children in AP Environmental Science at Orange High School. And this summer was quite a whirlwind for me with this project that kind of really snowballed into something much larger, which tends to happen with me quite frequently. But the what of this project was essentially to bring some project-based instruction into my classroom. I am really big on inquiry, so I really truly believe in the exploring, explaining, and applying of information, and I wanted to model that for students. And also have some community involvement to demonstrate what making a difference looks like in our community. So with this project, students have already concluded with some field notes on invasive species, keystone species, endangered, threatened, and whatnot. And just so we're clear, the monarch is not endangered, it's being evaluated, and nobody wants them to be on the endangered species list because it will hinder progress, and I can tell you about that later. But the students will be researching the migration patterns of monarchs, why they migrate in the first place, where they go to. They're going to be collecting data on that, on those migration patterns. They're also going to create some infographics as to what we can do as a community to help promote monarch conservation and build their population. Also, same with mapping, so a lot of cross-curricular activities with geometry, geography, math, all those things, all to help them be better prepared for the AP exam in May. And lastly, they're going to be designing and creating a pollinator garden, because I received a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources this year for that. The why behind this was I wanted to empower students. I talk the talk, but I wanted to also demonstrate walking the walk. All these pictures, by the way, are from my house, because this happened all summer. You can kind of see the monarch with the J formation, that means it's getting ready to pupate. I have released 61 monarchs this year from my house. I did not purchase any caterpillars, they all were found on my front yard, in my backyard, in my milkweed, because I have pollinator gardens. I live over on the shores by Allen Creek State Park. But I wanted to show the students, because I do stuff with ODOT, what change looks like in action, and also to empower them to do things on their own, that this is very easy to do, and it can make a huge difference. And I wanted to promote environmental stewardship within our community as well. So, this, last year, I was a part of the Ohio Department of Education's Curriculum Revision Team, and I became really close friends with the lady who runs education over at Ohio Department of Natural Resources, named Jen Dennison. And we became friends on Facebook and all sorts of social media, and she saw that I was raising these caterpillars over the summer. And she said, "Oh, you should contact this person from ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation," and they run the Ohio Pollinator Habitat Initiative. So I reached out to this lady named Marcy, I've never met her, I've only texted her and communicated through email, but she said, "This is great." Because I said, "I want to collaborate with my students, with you, bring some people in, again, like, show them some real-world examples." And she said, "Great, I have 2,500 milkweed seedlings that I can deliver to your house on Friday." This was in July. And I kind of freaked out a little bit, because I thought, "Oh, no, if I say no, what other opportunity will I have?" But as Tron probably knows all too well, I never shy away from a challenge, so I was like, "Sure, bring 'em over!" So a gooseneck trailer came into the shores and dropped off 2,500 milkweed into my house. This, as you can see, my husband was a little displaced by the seedlings. We, I had nine student volunteers, past and present, come, and we actually planted 2,000 of them on campus at Orange High School. I also, I had kids from two years ago, I have current students that came, it was an awesome experience, I had teachers come. We also delivered 400 to my neighborhood, to people in the shores community, as well as 500 to Allen Creek State Park. So, because of that, we were eligible to become a monarch conservation area, so we are recognized on a national database to be that, a monarch conservation area. So Orange High School has that, Tron has a certificate that they hung today, and we have three of these signs that are going to go on campus to tell the community and show off that this is what we're doing to make a difference. My AP Environmental Science students, in May, we are going to be going to Allen Creek State Park, or not Allen Creek State Park, I'm sorry, we went there already, we're going to go to Allen Creek Elementary, and we're going to be working with the kindergarten and preschool kids on butterfly life cycles. I also have submitted a grant through Lowe's in order to get the kids some tools, and I'll go over that in a second as well. But some of the activities that I want kids to be able to do, our students, to do with the elementary children, is to demonstrate the life cycle, and I want to get parents involved, so that the children will make little cocoons, I actually did this at a training I just went to, the kids will make their own little caterpillars. And then on parent night, I would like the students to make their own butterflies for their children, so then after a week, the kids can go through the whole life cycle and open up their chrysalis and find that there's a butterfly and they're not a caterpillar. The area which we planted, I worked with Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District to identify areas that we could plant these milkweeds that wouldn't disrupt any sort of, like, drainage areas. So you can see on the map where we planted them. This is where, you can see some of them are growing, and then that, on the far right, is what it will hopefully look like around those drainage areas. Some of them will be close to the sidewalk, so again, as people walk by, they'll be able to see that with the sign that we are a monarch conservation waste station. The where, the $500 grant I got from Ohio Department of Natural Resources, my students are going to be researching the soil to identify any amendments that need to be added to the soil, as well as a type of flowers that need to be planted that can survive well, that would involve not just the host plant, which is milkweed, but also important pollinator plants. I know which pollinator plants will do well, but I want them to figure that out, and then use that money from ODNR to purchase those plants, and we will put in the garden right around that area where our Eagle Scout last year made a patio. So it's right front and center, as people are driving by Olentangie Orange High School, they will see this. Another thing we did this year, working with OPHI, Ohio Pollinator Habitat Initiative, is we did a milkweed seed pod collection. We have donated so far 600 seed pods to Delaware Soil and Water. They then send those to a prison where the prisoners remove the seeds from the pods, they send the seeds to the Ohio Department of Agriculture where they are stratified, and then they send them back to the Marion Corrections Facility where they have a gardening program, and prisoners learn job skills training with horticulture, they grow the milkweed, and then OPHI disseminates them amongst the 19,000 miles they have of highways and byways they maintain in our state. This year, my students are going to be creating plans for what to do with that milkweed. On December 1st, ODOT will be evaluating those plans to determine if they can actually use them and put them into practice. We're going to also cultivate, attempt to cultivate some seedlings in the classrooms that we do visit Allen Creek. All the kindergartners and preschool children will have plants to then plant at their house. So, all of my students always say that education is a solution to any sort of our environmental issues that we have globally. I want to show them that education is powerful, and that even though I am teaching them, they are teaching others, and those kids are going to go home and teach their family members and their friends. I wrote a grant for Lowe's, I will not find out if I get that until January, but it was for $2,000, and the goal was to get every child in kindergarten and preschool over at Allen Creek gloves, gardening gloves, tools to garden, as well as coneflower seeds, so that they can go home and show their parents that this is what they can do to also make a difference. I also want to get kids outside, that was a big part of this, because I don't think we spend enough time outside. I've purchased two books that I want my kids, my students, to be able to read to the elementary kids. Again, planting some of those plants that we hopefully will be able to, I'll be able to stretch my money as far as possible with ODNR, and I also want to get the magnifying glasses to get them just to slow down and look at the world around them. So, these are my two kids, they're inheriting the world that we're leaving, and that's why I came up with this project, so.
Very good.
Do you have any questions over any of that?
I was going to show how ignorant I am about this, but...
That's okay.
Milkweed?
Yes.
Explain why you have to have milkweed to keep the monarchs.
Okay, so milkweed is the only plant source that the caterpillars will eat. So you have to have, milkweed is the host plant, so they have to have that as available source to lay their eggs for the caterpillars to grow on. And then, let me pull it back here, so that, that's what the milkweed looks like, when you break it, it actually looks like milk, it's like a latex-type material that's coming out. That is actually, and my students are going to figure this out, is what makes them bitter tasting, and that's why animals will not eat monarchs, because of the food that they consume is what makes them gross. But then the pollinating plants is what they have to have as an energy source to make their way from here all the way to Mexico, which is where they winter.
And you said something about they're not endangered, but they're on the...
Correct. So they are not endangered yet, they're being evaluated right now. The purpose, well, the reason why we do not want them to be on the endangered species list is because anytime you try to build a road, a school, anything, if they are labeled as such, you have to do a study. And because they're generalists, because there's so many plants that they can use nectar from, then you could basically say every area is an area for monarchs.
Oh, yeah, that would be bad.
Correct. So by doing this, we're eliminating that as a possibility.
Well, thank you.
And the good news is that this is the first time in 25 years we've had the highest monarch populations on record, so it's working.
How many classes and students are involved in the program?
I have, this year is the highest I've ever had for AP Environmental, we have 65 students at Orange High School. Within those 65, when we go over to Allen Creek Elementary, there'll be at least 60 kids from kindergarten and preschool. And then including tomorrow, for example, because we've been collecting seed pods, I've been keeping some to spread on campus, my students, as well as some students from the MD unit, are going to go and plant seeds together tomorrow outside.
Well, I'm a big fan of the PBL, I would assume you're probably familiar with the Shanahan 701 group.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I followed that for years, and it's just exciting to watch the kids involved in these projects.
Absolutely.
Learning experiences. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to thank Mrs. Timmons, Jessica, I can't call her Mrs. Timmons, I'm sorry. Jessica was the one who inspired my youngest, Drew, to do a double major at Miami in Environmental Earth Science and Sustainability. So thank you for that.
Sorry.
I did not push him there, at being in the business. I do understand the threat endangered species, I have about a dozen active projects where we're looking at, where we have to look at that before we can work in riverbeds, or we can do any kind of crossings. You know, I also work on the dark side of it for most people, which is the, you know, the oil and gas pipeline world. But that's the way that it is, you have to, you have to understand these things. My question to you is, tell me about the sustainability of your program, what's your intent to continue this on, and are you intent also on expanding it?
So the good news is, all the plants that we will be planting are perennials, they will come back year after year. The fertilizer that we plan to use is from a company called Echo Scraps, a couple college kids were able to identify fertilizers from, fertilizer from compost, like compostable foods. So that way, it will not increase any sort of runoff material that would go into our water supply. I intend to keep making it larger every year. I cannot apply next year for ODNR grant, but I can certainly apply for other ones to kind of expand it. I would love to get more elementary schools involved. I do know that our Garden Club, Interact Club, has volunteered to also help, not just with funding, but also with maintenance of the area.
That's great. Well, just, you know, you can always call me, we have three Threat Endangered Species specialists in our Columbus office here, they're working on projects around the, around the eastern United States for looking at everything from macroinvertebrates, mussels, all the way through to plants, bats.
And a lot of people tend to forget about plants.
And plants are, you know, plants are, yeah, and we have to be aware of that, and it's all part of what we do from a personal health and safety, too, because the plants that are out there, you know, the rule, you know, you see three, you leave it be, but that's also part of what we do when we're in the field as well, so feel free to, you know, you know how to find me.
Thank you. I do, actually, thank you.
Feel free.
And I do want to encourage, if anybody does want any information on milkweeds or just butterfly conservation, if you plant it, they will come. It's, it's awesome.
Good.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Yep. Well, our next presentation is on the State Report Card. Please welcome Jack, Dr. Fetti, and Jeanette Kenny.
Good evening. So, we wanted to present you with the State Report Card that was released earlier this month, I believe on the 13th of September. As you're aware, Ohio has a letter grading system for report cards for the past three or four years now, but this is the first year that districts receive an overall grade, where they've applied a weight to each of the grades in the different subcomponents. So our district's overall grade this year is a B. And you can see on there all of the different subgrades and sub-subgrades that are a part of the report card, and what we're going to intend to do this evening is explain each of those six components that you see up there, what we earned in all of those areas, and how that all led up to the B that we have as a district. And Ms. Kenny will be walking you through the details of the report card.
Good evening, and we're excited to be able to share a lot of good news with you today. So, as you can see, we're going to start with the achievement component, which is probably the most commonly understood component, and the one that we look at most often. There are two parts to that achievement component that come together to give us an overall grade of a B for achievement. The first one is indicators met. There are, we had 23 indicators that pertain to the Ohio State Tests, and we met 22 of the 23. Eighth-grade math is the one that we missed again this year. We're at about a 75%, and you need an 80% passage rate. The other two indicators that play into this part of the measure is the gifted indicator, which has three different pieces to it. One is to have a C or better on gifted growth. One is to have 117 performance index for just our gifted students, and then the third part is gifted input points, so looking at what percent of our kids are we identifying as gifted, and what percent are we actually serving. We did not meet the gifted indicator. We did meet the gifted indicator piece of performance index, but we did not meet it for gifted growth or the input points. And then the new indicator is chronic absenteeism, so it's looking at how many, what percent of our students are missing 10% or more of their school year. In order to meet this, we had to have less than 13.6% of your students, we're at about 5.6%. So we met that one, no problem. That is an indicator that that percentage will continually decrease, and in 2025, 26, it'll be 5%. So we're not far off from that right now. And then the other part that we talk about a lot is the performance index. We did get a B for performance index, we're at a 105.2, and that is a point and a half higher than it was last year. In comparison to other districts, we were ranked 25th in the state this year, which is up from 27th last year. We are fourth in central Ohio, and third within our similar district group.
And to get an A in the performance index, the benchmark is 108.
Will that go up next year? Do, do we know yet, or is it going to...
Yeah, so that one is actually one that's been consistent.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's looking at 108 divided by the total possible 120. As far as our schools, looking at the grade distribution for the achievement component, we had six schools that earned an A for achievement, and 17 schools that were a B. 15 of our 23 buildings increased their performance index, and all of our schools ranked in the top 18.4% of the state. To highlight a few, we had four elementary schools in the top 10 out of 678 schools, so Cheshire had the fourth highest performance index, Sider Ridge was number five, Tyler Brown number seven, and Freedom Trail number nine. We had two middle schools in the top 10 out of 324 68 buildings. Liberty Middle School was number six, and Berkshire was number 10. And then for high schools, we had one high school in the top 20 out of 614 schools, and that was Liberty High School at number 16. So, all of our schools are ranked very, very highly. So gap closing is another one of the larger components. We did have a district grade of an A in this measure, and that has been continually increasing for us. So in 2016, we were a C, in 2017, we were a B, we've now achieved an A. And this is a measure that probably changed the most this year on the State Report Card. In the past, it was just looking at passage percentage, so how many students are you getting to proficient? And this year, they calculated a performance index for each of the 10 different subgroups. So, in the past, if we didn't get a student to proficient, maybe we move them from limited to basic, that wasn't being reflected in the gap closing measure. Now it is, we're getting kind of credit, or it's showing when we're moving students along that continuum. And the great news is, we met 100%, we met all of the goals for all 10 of the subgroups. So, those goals will continue to increase until 2025, 26, and at the district level, we've already met that long-term goal for all of our subgroups. So it's something that we need to continually look at and make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students, but compared to what the state expectation is right now, we're already exceeding what those goals are. Graduation rate, we met that for all eight of our subgroups that are included there. And then there's a new piece of this, which is looking at how are our English learners acquiring the English language, and at what rate, and we met that piece of it as well. The other very exciting news is that it's a grade distribution for our schools, every one of our buildings earned an A in the gap closing measure, and every one of our schools met each of those goals outright. The other piece that is a little bit new in gap closing is they've also started calculating a growth index, or gain index, for all of the different subgroups. So even though we're meeting those goals already, we can also look at how are we growing those students, to make sure that not only are we meeting that achievement goal, but that each of those subgroups has that equal opportunity to make that growth year to year. So our, you'll see that if you look at the State Report Card on ODE's website, it's pretty basic information, but we provide our buildings with pretty detailed information about each subgroup, so they can continue to dig a little bit deeper. So the next big component is the progress, and this is one that I think we've talked about quite a bit here. We did earn an overall grade of a D in the progress measure this year, which is an increase from an F that we've received the past two years. And you can see the individual subgroup grades, so overall students, which would be really all tested students, we did, we still are an F in that area. Gifted students, we also had an F. Students with disabilities increased to a D, and then the students in the lowest 20% of achievement also increased to a C. One thing to keep in mind here is this is a three-year average. So in state law right now, it says when we're calculating this measure, it's using up to three years of past testing data. So this is including what happened in 2016, what happened in 2017, and what happened last year in 2018.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I ask a question on this one?
Yep.
Would you define, how is progress determined or measured? What is progress?
Right. It's a great question. So what they're doing is they're, it's, it's a very complex statistical formula, but it's looking at how like students are performing from one year to the next. And there's, there's many years of data that's included, but it's, it's a comparative measure that's looking at, how did all students in the state do? How much growth did they make from one year to the next? And looking at that average, how did our kids do? Did we meet, did we meet that, which would be a C, that's what expected growth would be? And that changes year to year, because like I said, they, they're recalculating it based on how students are actually performing.
And it's misleading, because in the definition, it says, it closely looks at the growth that all students are making, but not all students are taking these tests every year. So it's a false definition of this indicator.
The state, Jeanette joined a state advisory committee on value-added. Dr. Woolard from ODE was here previously, mentioned that to us. Jeanette has spent lots of time going down to Columbus to meet on that committee to help answer the question that Mr. King asked, because it's asked all over the state. And it sounds like they're making good progress and being forward-thinking, and that committee at least will have some good ideas that could help clear up value-added in the future. We're not sure if it's going to get anywhere yet.
Right.
The committee's doing some good work.
We actually just met last Thursday, and having Dr. Woolard in our district, he helped lead that committee, and they used Olentangie as an example, which was helpful to us, because then I was able to request a lot more data, and so we've got a little bit more to share with you tonight. Like I said, the, what's on the State Report Card is a three-year average. So in that committee, one of the things that we've been talking about is, is that what should be displayed, or if this is a yearly report card, should it be displaying what happened in the past school year? And so...
One on progress.
Sure.
How should someone, or how should we think about the progress grade versus a point and a half increase in the performance index?
Right.
Yeah, because in, in theory, you would think if your performance index is increasing, then your growth should be good as well. Part of it is, it just depends on how fast everyone else's performance index is also increasing, and if ours is increasing at a lesser rate, then our growth isn't going to look as good.
So this would argue that other, like, districts had better growth in their performance index?
Yeah. I mean, and there are some, but again, the other confusing part is, performance index, we're comparing year to year, and this progress measure is using three years of data. But at that committee meeting, I was able to get, what would our progress grade have been if we just looked at what happened last year with our students? And we would have had straight As across the board. So what that means is that we are, it's statistically significant that we are exceeding the expected growth compared to the state, if we just look at what happened in our schools last year. So, I think even Dr. Woolard had said this to us before, but our 2016 data was very low, and that is kind of what's holding us back to see that overall grade change. Yes.
So, my question is about gifted students. So, are, we have a high population of gifted students here in Olentangie, and how do you, they're already, like, if they're doing really, really well, and at that highest level on their state test, how do you show progress?
Well, so, there is, there's a, a lot of growth within the test, or stretch within the test, for students to be able to show growth, and it's also comparing it to like students. So it's looking at, how did other gifted kids across the state grow? Are other gifted kids growing at a faster rate? And in this case, last year, we exceeded what that growth expectation would be compared to other gifted students around the state.
And that's important to remember when we're looking at the progress, that a C means a year's worth of growth.
Mm-hmm, right.
So this is the only measure on the report card where the C is kind of the goal, and also that's a three-year average, none of the other measures are structured that way.
Right.
Which is hopefully one of the things the committee will take over.
Right, well, when they're thinking of take, you know, going to a one-year, looking at the growth over a one-year basis, also have them change the definition to take out the word "all students," because not all students are tested every year.
Mm-hmm.
It just makes me mad.
Right.
I mean, if you're going to write something, if this is an educational report card, write it grammatically correct.
Okay. That's a big ask, Julie.
Well, when you need 32 pages to explain your report card, there's a problem.
Absolutely, yes.
And so that is, that, I mean, that's definitely one thing I can bring to the committee, we're going to meet again, I think. What we hoped to do at our last meeting on Thursday was to give some suggestions of what we, as districts around Ohio, you know, think about this measure, so that they can potentially bring it to the state board to make a recommendation to them, who then would make a recommendation to legislators. So, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, because a lot of this is in state law, but it's good for us to, at least to be able to have a voice at the table to advocate for what we believe.
So that, the one-year average obviously makes us look better than the three-year averages, or could there potentially be a downside to the one-year average?
Oh, absolutely.
Could we see wider swings in our data?
There, there could be, and that's what we talked about at the meeting a lot, is with more data, it's going to be more stable. One year's worth of data should still be pretty stable, if we have a stable testing system, which we have for a little while, but you never know what's going to happen with that, versus responsive, should we, you know, it's going to be more responsive if we just have one year's worth of data compared to three, so we debated that quite a bit.
Well, we went, we, we just remind people, we had solid...
Well, we went, we just remind people, we had solid growth for many years prior to the last testing change. And when we, the last year of us doing paper pencil tests, we still had A growth even with a new test. And then went to a new test, and we're using the, switched computers as an excuse, but we did see a vastly, a wide variation in our growth that year, which then was a one-year average, which then was a two-year average, which now is a three-year average, so...
It's haunting us, yes.
Right. So, again, we're not making any excuses, and Jack knows his expectations, so...
But to many dear question also, earlier this week, Ms. McMurray and I met with the continuous improvement committee and reviewed some of the grades, and one of the questions that was asked was, how do we make sense of all of this? You know, do gifted students have an F, or do they have an A? And the answer is always, ask your child how you're doing. Ask your teacher how your kid's doing. I mean, that's always the best measure of a school. I mean, Mrs. Timmons' class isn't reflected in the report card, but, you know, as Mr. Bartsch knows, we'd all want our kids in that class. So, there's other ways to measure schools as well.
As far as building data goes, here's the grade distribution for our buildings. This is an increase. We have 15 schools at a C or better this year compared to just nine last year. And of course, I requested building level data from ODE as well. So again, this is a three-year average for the buildings. If it was just based on last year's information, this would be the distribution for our schools as well. So, I think what the data shows in looking at that one year is that we're trending in the right direction. We had a year of data that we're not happy with, but we've made a lot of growth since then. But unfortunately, that, that information's still calculated in. All right, this measure used to be called K3 literacy. It's now called improving at-risk K3 readers. I don't know why they changed the name, but they did. As a district, this year, we are not rated. In order to receive a grade for this measure, you have to have at least 5% of your kindergarteners from that school year identified as not on track. We had less than that, so as a district, we did not receive a grade. We had five buildings who did receive a grade. Four are a C, one is a D, and the other 10 are not rated. And then this one is one where that, the grading scale does shift every year, depending on how the state performed. So the low end of a C is always what the state average was the previous year.
Also, it's not explained to the parents in the report card what NR means, you know? So they're like, what? Why don't you get a rating? Why don't you explain that in your 32 pages?
And what we, we always continue to look at as well is, that this past school year, we had 100% of our kindergarten, or not kindergarten, 100% of our third graders promoted to the fourth grade prior to school starting. So if we're looking at our K3 literacy program as a whole, we're being very successful with those students. By third grade, we're getting them to read...
Why isn't that reported in the state report card?
And by not having a grade, it's not influencing the overall grade for the district as well. So it's not factoring into the GPA either way.
And I know this is a measure that we talked about last week at our committee meeting that wasn't something that we were addressing, but it's a highly debated measure that they're looking at. Is it really giving the information that we should be reporting? Graduation rate, this is a, a measure that stayed pretty stable throughout the past few years. So as a district, we are an A for both our four-year and five-year graduation rate, and all three of our high schools have earned an A in both parts of this measure and in the overall measure as well. Prepared for success is the final measure. As a district, we have received a B, which our percentage of students that are considered in their formula, prepared for success, we're at 84%. And so in order to kind of calculate this grade, they're looking at first, how many of our students are remediation-free on ACT or SAT? How many of our students have earned an honors diploma? And how many have earned an industry-recognized credential? So that's kind of the first tier. Of that group of students who fit one of those categories, they can earn an additional bonus points if they've gotten a three or higher on an AP test, or if they've earned at least three credits through College Credit Plus. So then it takes the number of points divided by the cohort of students, and that's where we get that percentage. In this, if we look at our percentage, we are ranked 21st in the state in this measure, 7th in Central Ohio, and 6th within our similar districts. There are only nine As in the entire state in this measure right now. You can see our school grades and the school percentages there, both at the district level and at the school level. Those percentages increased by about five, between 5 and 9% in all of our buildings. So those are also continuing that upward trend.
In what area of those three indicators are we lacking? Is it remediation that we're falling behind? Is it industry credentials? You know, where can, where can you see that we could improve?
Well, so that, we don't really have many students at all who fall into the industry credentials category. So, that, we really don't see counting towards...
And just at the Career Center level, we argue what they accept as industry credentials, because we don't agree with what they choose to accept, by the way. But, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. So, we're, so it's really, it's honors diploma and through remediation-free that we're looking at. So, I know Jack and I both were looking at kind of some of those other districts, where maybe are there some areas that we kind of aren't, aren't where we want to be or we want to increase? And we talked a lot about, you know, remediation-free. We're, it's pretty average as far as the number of students who are earning honors diploma. We're usually in like the 40, 45% range, and that's pretty typical. But there are some districts who have a higher remediation-free, and that's where they are kind of getting that extra bump from us. We're looking at, up at Rollington in particular, they are an A, they are one of the A districts in the state.
Do you, do you really think those are proper indicators for preparedness for success?
They're among proper indicators, for sure.
Right, it's part of it.
I mean, to me, a kid is, we've prepared them if they can speak publicly, you know, organize their thoughts, do presentations, like, I don't know what an honors diploma has to do with being prepared for success.
In our experience, colleges don't value the honors diploma very much. But these are indicators, they're not universal indicators. That's my only kind of gripe with this measure, is they're select indicators for prepared for success. But it's an understandable benchmark at least, and, you know, I'll gladly accept a B, that I understand how I can get to an A, you know, that, that we can keep working towards it. And it's a rigorous standard, and we're not afraid of rigors.
In this regard, prepared for success, did you see the op-ed in the dispatch this morning about the state report card?
No, no.
If I recall, I think the author is a current superintendent, but he was really angry about the state report card process. And he focused on prepared for success. So you might take a look at that.
I will, for sure.
He thought it's...
And you want to expand on maybe the topic of a profile of a graduate we're going to be?
Yeah, so, one of the things we've been talking about is the idea of, what do we want? It's called Profile of a Graduate, is the concept we've been kicking around, and other districts are looking at it as well. But what is the, that picture of a whole child that we want our graduates to look like? What are all the aspects? Academic, social, emotional, interpersonal? You know, I don't like the term soft skills, but, you know, that, that comes into play as well, of course. Starting back, I think it was in 2012, we started District Professional Development about what does a college and career-ready student look like? And that was our district-focused PD. And ever since then, we've been building on that concept. And I think we, one of the things we're considering now is how do we define that for our community? How do we involve our community in that process as well, to make that definition? So that we can look at all those things that you just mentioned, that we care about. Because we know that when our students graduate, they're, they're prepared for success. I mean, we know that. There's so many other measures, like you just mentioned, that can demonstrate that. So how do we present that to the community, maybe?
Don't we have some great new software that we can gather some information? What's it called?
Thought Exchange.
Thought Exchange, yes. And is Portrait of a Graduate, is that a Patel for Kids program?
They've, they've kind of, yeah, picked up on that as well. And they're, they're hosting, I think, a website where it's like a clearinghouse. You don't necessarily have to work with them, but they ask you to submit...
Well, I sat through their presentation at the Capitol Conference last year, I believe. But, part of that portrait is really what the community expectations are to get out of our graduates. So yes, we definitely need to see what their expectations are. Because they, I'm sure they're very different than this report card. And just one last comment on the report card. I wish the state report card looked like the elementary school report cards, where you have like a section and all these, because people aren't going to read that 32-page document, and they don't understand the subcategories, and, and if they were listed and you saw the grade, and it just seems like you might not need a 32-page explanation of how to use the report card.
Representative Duffy has proposed changes to the state report card, but there's a battle, not only within his party, but also at the Department of Education, on if those changes should be made. He's term-limited out, so it's not going to go anywhere between now and December, unfortunately. But his ideas need to be heard, because they are worthwhile ideas. And his whole thing is, why do we have a 32-page booklet that explains the state report card?
Yeah, it's going to continue to be a politicized process. And I think that's also why that Portrait of a Graduate, I actually talked to Vince DiTilio today, he's going to be presenting at the next board meeting about this year's professional development, and that's a piece of what he'll be presenting to you. So, learn more about that. And there's one more slide then, if you would click for me. So at the same time that the state released the state report card, they also released, with much less fanfare, the Special Education Annual Rating, which is based on 2016, 2017 data. So here is our data for you to review briefly. We met requirements. We either meet or don't meet, I believe. Our compliance score is a 3.67 out of 4. Our results score was a 4 out of 4. Our overall score is a 3.83. There are 12 indicators that these, that make up this, these scores, and we met 11 of the 12. The one indicator that we missed was for, we did not make corrections in the timeline established by ODE during our onsite review in 15, 16, 16, 17. So I asked Mr. Argonbry, what happened? They gave us a 1 out of 4 on that indicator. I said, what happened? And he said, I honestly have no idea. So, he contacted the folks who did the review, and they said, we gave you a timeline that you didn't meet. And there were a lot of timelines that, they would review IEPs that were a part of the selective review process, and they would say, this needs to be corrected in this amount of time. We'd have to contact parents, have an IEP meeting to do a revision. So, he said, do you want me to look into which one we didn't meet? And I, I said, no, that's okay. We did not meet a timeline, we own it. We're not sure which one it was, but we, we definitely are going to strive for a 12 out of 12 next year. But out of all of those indicators, I was very, very pleased with those results. So in total, if you want to, can you go back a slide then for the overall? Were there any other questions about the report card?
I just have a question for Mr. Rafe. Were you the first superintendent to get the performance index again this year because of Jeanette being right there on the computer? Remember you bragged about that last year?
Yeah. She's on it, she knows the call's coming. She's always one step ahead.
That's why it's worth staying up late to get it done, because otherwise...
And then he waits for about two weeks until Jeanette can get another district's performance index.
That's true.
Because it takes them a lot longer than it takes her, so...
Yes, and then they don't like to disclose theirs, because they're, ones we most commonly compare ourselves to are considerably lower.
Yeah.
It's all right.
Well, thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is from Lori Carter Evans. It's a transportation update. Welcome.
Well, good evening.
Hi.
It's a pleasure for me to be here to present the exciting, often complicated, transportation operation. And we have, coming to you are some small trinkets from transportation that you might enjoy, or somebody in your home might enjoy. And to remind you that, those big yellow buses have blinking lights.
Thank you. I think I'm imagining school buses.
Oh, that's cute. Let's see here. I'm walking my dog.
Choking hazard, Mr. Bartsch, don't play.
Yes, be careful with those. So when, when many people think about the school day, it starts and ends with the school bus. So, each day, parents and students get up and get ready to go to the bus stop to meet that school bus and its blinking lights. And before I go on further, I didn't tell you, I'm the Director of Transportation, Lori Carter Evans. So, transportation plays an integral part in all of our lives, whether there are student drivers, there are riders on the bus, parents dropping off students, or they're just in the way of our motorists. So, we want to make sure that we operate in efficient and consistent operation. So, I'm going to give you a glimpse of transportation this evening, just to talk about our transportation facts, like to talk about a SWOT analysis, strategic plan, how we fit in there, our teamwork, safety and efficiency, our recruiting efforts, and initiatives, what's, what's down the road for us. So, our transportation department, we have 182 dedicated people. 161 of them are drivers, 14 office staff, and seven mechanics. We run about 200, 2.4 million miles annually, on 190 buses, carrying approximately 152 routes. I say approximately, because right now we have 149, but we're adding to that. And nearly 11,000 riders. So, I mentioned a SWOT analysis, I didn't give you all of the details of the SWOT analysis, but in order to see, since I'm coming in after being out of, away for six and a half years from Olentangie, it was important for me to look at the operation as a whole, and look at our strengths, weaknesses, our, sorry about that, our opportunities, and the threats that may be, may be before us. So, in that, of course, our operation consists of safe, or excellent drivers, and delivering safe service. Those are our strengths. In spite of any of our deficiencies that we might have, such as the challenges of hiring and recruiting, and some of our absenteeism, the service delivery is excellent, and the drivers that we have deliver excellent service. So, some of the things that, and I didn't mention all of the weaknesses in transportation, but I do want to point out some of the challenges that we're working through. We have recruitment, we are recruiting, but not everybody is equipped to become a school bus driver. So, and we don't hire just anybody who wants to become a school bus driver. We have some strict standards that we have people go through in order to work in the Olentangie Department of Transportation. So, our hiring sometimes isn't where we, we actually want to be. And I'm going to share that, a little bit of that with you in another slide. And our absenteeism isn't where we want it to be either. So, those are things that we're, we're looking, we're focusing on. So, some other challenges that we've had. We implemented a new map this year. And the new map, whenever you implement a new map, we really want to have that done in January, February, before we start our routing process. However, the new map, by the time our vendor supplied that to us, we had to make a lot of adjustments to that, such as the roundabouts in our area where our vendor had our roundabouts going in the opposite way. So, those are map fixes that we had to make. Although, you know, we use the GIS map from the county, there are certain things that it still doesn't fit, so we have to make corrections before we start our routing process. So our routing process, we have such a tight timeframe in the summer, that we really need the map to be ready. So we had to make a decision, do we use the new map, or do we use the old one? But if we're going to move forward in the future, as I talk about GPS and the parent app, we want to make sure we have the new map ready. So we decided to continue to press forward with the, the new map, and implement it anyway. Our student growth, of course, that's a challenge for everybody. We welcome it, we, we love it, but it's a challenge to get everybody in all of their, the nuances and special things that people need, to where they need to be on a daily basis, although we're ready for it, and so we do it. But it was a challenge. Redistricting, of course, in our district, that's a challenge for transportation. But we support redistricting, of course, and we do what we need to. But in our tight timeframe in the summer, trying to plan routes for that can be challenging. Our need for substitutes, there's always a need for substitutes. We do want our drivers to be able to take off the time that they need, but we want to make sure that parents have, that we have a driver in the seat. to make sure that parents have, that we have a driver in the seat, so that we can transport our students, of course, on time, every day, and safely. So, and the support for our educational programs, which, as you know, our educational programs, we have our DAC program, STEM, we have work-study programs, special education programs, Oasis, and ACT. And those are programs that we support on a daily basis. Yes.
Have you ever not been able to staff a bus? In Missa Row?
So, when we have the challenge of, say, for absenteeism or a vacancy, we're always going to send a bus. So what gets impacted is our timeliness for that bus. So when, if the, we will never just say, "Okay, everybody, come pick up your kids, we're not sending the bus."
Bus, too, is canceled.
But, yes. But we do make sure that we staff it. And in the future, we can be a leader in the near future, in this region, in student transportation service delivery.
The most typical way that happens always, we end up having to split a route, if we don't have a, we end up not having a sub, or an office staff person with a CDL license doesn't, isn't, you know, is already, we're short a driver, they have to split a route. Which becomes difficult and problematic, because now the driver's driving extra stops, takes longer, get off time. Because I don't know about you, I know, that bus kind of, I could set my clock, my watch, by when that bus used to come in front of my house.
6:42.
Exactly.
So, and another, one of the threats that we have to watch is our aging fleet. We want to make sure that we don't have a bus on the road that's older than 15 years. We want to make sure that we take advantage of new technology, new safety features, that our manufacturers, bus manufacturers are adding to our buses.
Although, we did get a request from a parent last week when it was very hot
Yes.
that our buses have air conditioning.
Oh, okay.
We respectfully told them that that wouldn't be happening, we weren't going to retrofit all 100 and so many buses.
We'll do that when we put in the pool.
Nor buy more buses with air conditioning.
Because you can't have, if you have one AC bus, you don't have enough. I mean, you have two, you still grow with your number, but you can never have enough until you equip the whole fleet, so. So where do we fit into the strategic plan? We have our internal processes, and it's obvious that we do fit into striving for a culture of operational excellence. But we feel we also fit into students and stakeholders alleviating those barriers to learning. Of course, if the bus isn't there, taking students to school, then that is a big barrier to learning. If they're not there on time, that's a barrier to learning. So we definitely fit into, into that area. And resource stewardship, want to make sure that we're managing our assets wisely. So teamwork. Teamwork is an area of focus that we have, we want to ensure that we're partnering together internally and externally with our stakeholders. But I do have some members of my team that I like to have them stand and wave. We have our union president
Yep.
Kevin Vangeloff.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Kevin.
Our supervisor, our two supervisors, one for our Berkshire compound, Dan Maurer. And we have Amy Morgan, she's a supervisor of our Liberty Bus Compound. So we feel that we're the leadership team in transportation, and we work closely together. We have our labor management meetings, and we meet monthly. And we try to stay on top of issues before they become a bigger deal to deal with. So, at our in-service and professional development that we have, we try to make that hands-on and interactive. We also give our new people ALIS training, so we partner with our SROs and human resources to make sure that we present that. I actually went through that this year, and I enjoyed it, especially when I was able to volunteer in turning the gun away from the SRO, and I didn't mean to injure him, but I did. Not on purpose. So, and recognition. We really want to make sure that we recognize our drivers for the work that they do. We have a perfect attendance breakfast, and that's attended by Mr. Rafe and Mr. Meyer. I think they quite enjoy that. And our drivers are always glad to have them there at the perfect attendance breakfast, and we want to encourage people to have perfect attendance, and we had a really good number of people for that. Our star driver of the week, we select somebody each week, based on comments that we get from parents, we give them their own parking space, and we take a picture, and we put down the blurb of whatever parent said that they did, and how they impacted their child in a positive way. Service awards, we give out service awards every year, and we have Driver Appreciation Day, and that takes place in May, and actually, that's national, and we do participate in that. So I want to talk a little bit about safety. Designated place of safety, that's something that we try to, our drivers teach students in the beginning of the school year, and they encourage and enforce it throughout the school year. Some people are confused by that. It's required by law, and we have students, once they leave the bus, they are crossed onto their residence side of the road, and then they have to stay in place, about 10 feet away from the bus, or in their designated area of safety. And before the driver cancels the lights, the students still need to be there, because they're counting the number of students there, and we don't want somebody running back for papers or anything like that. So then the bus pulls away, students are already on their residence side, and then they can walk to their residence. Sometimes, when drivers teach students their designated place of safety, and if parents aren't involved in that, they may not understand why the child says, you know, "I really have to stand here until my driver pulls away." And it's for their safety. It goes, it works hand-in-hand with our motorists to, don't stop for the blinking lights, the stop arm. We wouldn't want someone to pass the school bus when students aren't in their designated place of safety, or they're being crossed. We also emphasize that, not only on the bus with the drivers in the beginning of the year, but we visit the schools. And in one of the pictures, you can see there an owl, and where it has a sign that says designated place of safety, that's Ollie the Owl. That's one of our trainers that dresses up in the costume, and she visits the schools. And then there's an entire presentation about the designated area of safety, how you cross the street, how you listen to the driver for instructions when you're crossing, when they're coming, approaching a railroad crossing. So all that is taught, and the students love it. It's Buzzy the Bus and Ollie the Owl. Bus Safety Week is the third week in October, and during Bus Safety Week, that's when we emphasize to our motorists that buses are out there, please don't pass the buses. We like to promote that with our students. There's different contests, and it's just a national way of recognizing the safe, safety efforts for the school bus. We also plan our student evacuations on the bus during this time, so that we can make sure that if there is an emergency, that students know how to evacuate the bus safely. Accident prevention is another focus. We want to always look at where we stand in our, with our accidents, we want to work to prevent accidents. One of the ways we're looking at doing that is, there's a new program that we are implementing this year called the Driver Improvement Program. It's a DIP program. If any of you are familiar with the rodeo, there are cones and different maneuvers that our drivers do, diminishing clearance, right turns, left turns, different things like that. Well, we're making this part of our training, where we may have a parking lot that is set up with the cones, and as the drivers finish their morning route, then they're going to be, a certain number of drivers will be told, well, go over to Orange Middle School, so that you can do your DIP maneuvers. A trainer will get on the bus with a clipboard, and just get them to go through the maneuvers. Sometimes, and this doesn't usually take place unless they're participating in the rodeo. And the rodeo takes place once a year in a region, it's with other school bus drivers, and that's a competition. For the Driver Improvement Program, that's part of training, so, and if they want to participate in the rodeo, they'll be better equipped to do that. And last year, we had the number-one driver who won first place, and he's pictured there with his plaque from the rodeo. So we're proud of that. Railroad crossing safety, of course, that's important in our school district. We don't have many, do we? Railroad crossings, but we have too many, actually, so that is something that we want to ensure that our drivers know how to cross safely, and our students. Efficiency and operation. With our growing number of students, our special education programs, our non-public schools, we want to ensure that we are routing as efficiently as possible for cost avoidance, and ensuring that we are not having more routes than we need, but still making sure that we have a sufficient number of routes to transport our students. So, this is just a glimpse of what we've done over the years, starting in 2013, 14, in the number of routes. Last year, with redistricting, opening Berlin, adding students, right now, we stand at 149, where we added one more route, but now we have two more routes, definitely, that we're running, that will officially get added in November. And then we're leaving a little bit more room, that we don't want our buses to be overcrowded, or if there's a little bit of, where the bus is not on time, then we're able to give us, give ourselves some room. And we think by the end of the year, we'll be at 152. Yes.
How many of those routes are not Olentangie routes? And I don't mean like Career Center, because that's, we're still taking Olentangie kids there, but like the private schools.
Okay, so we have a number of private schools, St. Paul, St. Mary, St. Michael, and I'm trying to think of our number without having that chart in front of me, but we have, so say for St. Michael, we have five buses that serve St. Michael schools. And three for St. Bridget, and then we have St. Paul. So we have a number of non-public routes that we're looking at, because in some cases, some of the, the schools are getting further, and I guess with the traffic.
Right.
And, you know, there's, we can't always get to some of these non-public schools in a reasonable time, and by law, we have to be able to reach the school within 30 minutes. And if we can't, and that's on a school day, at the time that the school would operate or open, we would have to be there within 30 minutes. So if we were doing a timing test, it would start 45 minutes before the bell for that non-public school. And if we don't make it within 30 minutes, then they're not eligible for transportation. And that's happened in a couple of cases this year. And we're still continuing to look at our non-publics to ensure that they are eligible for transportation. Policy adherence, and that kind of goes hand-in-hand with that 30-minute timing test, that if, the eligibility for transportation, not only in non-public, but with our students residing within a mile, or marginally over a mile, we want to make sure that they are eligible for transportation, and that we're not unnecessarily transporting students, as that causes the number of our routes to grow, and then we're not as efficient as we should be.
Well, and as you know, we've pulled back on some of the non-public transportation. And part of the argument made to the people that were with the non-public transportation that was pulled back from, was that we're not transporting students who actually live in our district and attend our schools either, because they're, because we had been transporting, you know, when a neighborhood is still substantially under construction. We would transport students, because there wasn't a safe path to school. But then, once Lori's taken a look at some neighborhoods, and pulled back on some of that, you know, she's following the walk-zone policy
Right.
that the board adopted
That we put it in place.
years ago.
Yep.
So...
So we're measuring what matters. This is the only way that we can get better, if we know what our baseline is and where we need to improve. So we're tracking preventable accidents, our on-time performance, efficiency target, and that's set by the state, depending on the number of students that we transport on each bus, and how many buses we have on the road. Our cost per mile, average age of our fleet, and our attendance rate, those are all things that will make us better and more cost-efficient in transportation. So I mentioned our preventable accidents and our safety program. This is a measure of where we stand right now. It's not where we want to be. This is one of our challenges and one of our focuses for now, and probably until we get that reversed, where we won't have 72% of our accidents that are prevent, or, you know, I may have switched, yes, where our accidents are not 72-preventable, those are the accidents that we can prevent through training, through our DIP program, through measures that we take in the department to decrease that number. And we don't want non-preventable accidents either. We don't want any accidents, but if we're going to have them, we don't want them to be caused by our drivers. Our recruiting efforts. So this is just a glimpse of this chart, of what happens when we recruit drivers and end up hiring drivers. But what we do to recruit, we do have informational sessions, where if we're not having a job fair, we invite the applicants in, tell them about transportation, what it takes to become a driver, and hopefully, set up an interview and hired, and get them, get them hired and into the process. We're partnering with human resources to plan our job fairs. Our target was three per year, but actually, we're going to exceed that this year, because we're going to do, we just had one yesterday, where we partnered with other departments, and we're looking to do that on either, probably monthly, on a monthly basis, not the month that we open school
Right.
or in-school, but in the middle. So we're looking to increase the number of drivers that we have. So we started off, this is a snapshot from April to September, where we had 38 applicants. Well, 14 of those applicants started training. Eight of those applicants completed training. And then five continued after the training. So even if they completed training, sometimes they determine that this isn't, this isn't a good fit for them, or we might determine that it's not a good fit for them. And then, four of them have been hired. We do have the other one of the five testing next week. And we also still have, I guess, five of the 14 that started training, in training. But I understand that they are also going to be testing in the next few weeks. And recently, we interviewed six. I did, actually, we're still, from yesterday, we're still increasing those numbers, so we're proud of that, that our efforts to recruit, they're paying off. So we hopefully will see that with them behind the wheel. So what's down the road for us in our initiatives? We're looking at GPS. We currently have GPS on our radio system, but it's not giving us all the information that we need, so we're looking to implement GPS and integrate that with our routing system, so we can compare planned versus actual. So the routes that we plan, how are they actually being driven, and how can we make them more efficient? An app for parents, where parents can use their phones, their laptops, to see where the bus is, and know about what time that bus is coming to the stop. Our new bus purchase, last year, we purchased 24, we're looking to purchase 12 over the next few years. Our enhance, we're enhancing our video camera system, so that we can have more clarity in what we see, and what we share with our schools. We have an electronic bus referral process, which is where we report if there are incidents on the bus, maybe student management issues, then we can work with our schools electronically, rather than carrying papers or sending papers about conduct, and then they can respond by way of our electronic process. And our training program enhancements, as I mentioned, our DIP program, Driver Improvement Program, and we're looking to create a training library, where drivers can have those resources available to them. So that's what's down the road for us. That concludes my briefing on transportation. Any questions?
I have a couple. Well, first, I want to commend you on keeping our route number where you've got it, because we've had a lot of change and growth in the last few years, so that's an impressive undertaking. You talked about the preventable versus non-preventable accidents, like, how many accidents did we have with drivers last school year?
So we had 40 accidents total. So...
For the '17, '18 school year?
For, oh, well, you know what, in the glimpse, yes, for the '17, '18, yes. For, oh, well, you know, in the glimpse, yes, for the '17, '18, yes.
And is that?
Forty of those. And those are, that's a total number.
Okay.
So I think 20, nearly 30 of those were preventable. That's what we want to decrease.
And then I have a request. I would, I, this is my year as the president, and I've been going around the district and visiting different things, and I would really like to take a ride on the bus, because it's been a long time.
And we would love it.
And I was, and maybe Kevin can help us remember, but I want to say it was last year or the year before, we had a bus driver that Mr. Rafe sent a note out about, because he had a student that had cancer, and he got everybody on the bus to make a card. Do you remember that? And then he went down and visited the little girl when she was in the hospital. I'd love to go on his bus. But I don't know if you know, if we can figure out who that was, or one of your bus drivers of the week. So could you help me set that up?
Definitely.
Are you going to be?
I would love that.
I'm going to be good.
Okay.
I am.
And then I had a question. Do we use the facility at Shanahan anymore, where we used to house all the, you know, and work on the buses? Do we do anything with that at all?
We don't.
We do not, but we are looking at that, maybe repurpose that, because we continue to add, obviously, as we continue to grow, we're not growing our bus compounds, so we are looking at.
It is centrally located.
Yeah. So it's a satellite office where a certain number of buses, we're still looking at what puts us over capacity at the other two, but we know that we've outgrown the other two. So we're looking to more centrally locate some of our buses. So, I mean, we have schools that are closer to this area, so that would be helpful for us to, to open.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Yes. Nice presentation.
Well, thank you.
Okay, moving on. It's time for the board's president's report. I'll be brief. September is, I can't believe it's about over, and in two weeks, it will be the end of our first marking period. Quarter, what do we call it?
Quarter.
Quarter. So I think, I think we're in a groove now, right?
So, I hope.
I hope. And over the last few weeks, I got the opportunity to visit Glen Oak. Jacqueline Roscoe, the principal there, invited me to a data meeting. This was fascinating, and I have a completely new appreciation for what they're doing in our schools to address the needs of their gifted and struggling students. So I got to go, a couple of things. I got to go into this little pie-shaped room with so many people crammed in there in a projector. And so when, when we say we're out of room, we're out of room. So they, you know, so we're all in this room, and there's a projector, and they're pulling up all the students with their assessment data. And it was really interesting to watch them present their cases and what they think would be the most suitable for each of these children. It was wonderful. I was very impressed. And that was just kindergarten, like, that was a two-hour one, just for kindergartners. And so they do each grade, and I think it was right before Jeanette sent out all her data. So the principal was up like the night before to make this into their schedule. I'm just amazed on what a puzzle it all is and how they managed to get it done and do it quite well. So that was, that was really, really interesting. I was glad I got to do that. I was also invited to Oak Creek Elementary by Julie Lather to do the Walk-a-thon. I walked with the kindergartners. Oh, my goodness. They're so cute. And I think they raised like $12,000.
Oh, my gosh.
I was invited to Tyler Runs, I think it was last weekend, but I've been to a lot of Tyler Run Walk-a-Thons, and they raise usually around $25,000. So, very fun. And I hadn't ever walked the Little Bear, is it Little Bear Loop?
Yep.
Today, I had the opportunity to go to the State of the Schools Delaware Chamber meeting, and this is where my daytime job and my board roles got to intertwine. So I got to see all the Delaware superintendents present. And it was very interesting. They started off with Paul Kraft from Delaware City Schools, and he gave various information about Delaware. And one of the things that I found the most interesting was the growth in our county is 34%.
Oh, it's huge.
In school growth. And so he said, or help me remember, it was of all the school districts, was it 88?
There's 88 counties in Ohio, only three have grown in the last 10 years.
And we, like, I think so, we're at?
Warren County near Cincinnati is about 2%.
Yeah, but the next one down was like 4% growth. We're at 34%. It was pretty staggering to see. Right, am I right? Am I misquoting? You don't want to correct me publicly.
You're correct. Well, you asked me to help you out, and then you wouldn't let me finish, so I feel like I'm at home. Sorry, honey, if you're listening. Yes, it was, the next one was 4%. It was Warren.
Wow.
And he, you know, and Pickaway County, not Pickaway, Fairfield County, Pickerington, where Pickerington is. His slide had Union County with the decline. Union County is actually the fastest-growing county in the state now, because they do it off a percentage basis. Delaware remains the highest-growing population, you know, but it is staggering that our growth is like 34%. Interestingly, in that span, since, I think, I think the number was since from 2006, correct me if I'm wrong, or help me out?
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you. That Delaware County's grown by 34%. Buckeye Valley is actually, has fewer students than, they've remained relatively flat.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They've lost?
And Delaware's grown by about 800 students in that span. Big Walnut's grown by about, you know, 1,000 students in that span, and we've grown by 12,000.
Right. But they've grown in the decade, we grow a year. I mean, it's, it's pretty remarkable. And anyway, so that was one of the things I got to go to today. Also this week, we had, the Olentangie Education Foundation had their kickoff, and Julie, Dave, and myself were able to attend. And Dave, did you want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, just, yeah, thanks. The OEF, Olentangie Education Foundation, they call it their legacy kickoff, and it was sponsored, thank you very much, to Ohio State's Wexner Medical Center. The purpose of the evening was twofold. It was to raise, continue to raise, enhance awareness, and also to present opportunities for funding of the OEF as it, to support its mission of enhancing Olentangie's educational experience. Pretty nice little attendance, but a real highlight was when Pam Bachman, the OEF current president, welcomed Joshua Perry, who donated $5,000 check from Evans Farm towards the effort of funding the OEF. That was pretty spectacular. It was really a nice, I think, firestarter to start that whole conversation. So it was a very good evening.
To add further comment on that, they were providing us with information with Upper Arlington's.
Yes.
Foundation and Bexley's. Now.
3.1 million and 2.7 million.
Right. And, and Bexley is, what, 3,200 students in Arlington's?
Like nine.
Was it 9,000?
Eight. A lot less.
Right, and we're 21,000, and, and then they showed what we've been able to do.
74,000.
In grants, right. But it's, you know, we need to step it up.
Well, one thing we had talked about, Mindy and I, and I think.
Oh, Dave.
Yeah.
Welcome to the conversation.
There has to be, they're asking, and I appreciate, Elaine Eddy has endowed a scholar, she's endowed.
A fund.
A fund for teachers through the Olentangie Education Foundation. She was, she's the first one that, to name a fund, and so I think that's fantastic. And so we were talking about, we should, as school board members, both current and probably past, ask if we should do our own fund.
Right.
And we could start with, you know, doing two pays of our school board money, you know, to start this endowed fund, per year. We had paid $125, and they take taxes out, so, you know, $250 is what we would all.
If interested, I think.
Start a school board member endowed fund with the Olentangie Education Foundation.
I'm in.
You're in?
Mm-hmm.
Kevin? All right. Yay, okay.
Is Emily just going to divert the stipend directly to her, to write a check?
No, I almost asked Sue about that, because.
If I write a check, I can take a tax.
They don't do like payroll deduction. And we were also discussing, my husband's company does a match.
Yeah.
So I went home right after the meeting and said, hey, let's figure out this match thing so that we can, you know, have a fund over there, and, but I have to kind of wait on him, since he's the employee, and he's not good with follow-up. But, but I'll hound, I'll hound.
That's on record.
Yeah.
That'll make the paper.
So that is it for the president's report. Mr. Rafe, please share your superintendent report.
All right. Well, welcome, welcome, everybody, all our guests. I would, we do have two guests from Delaware schools who are here on a school project to attend, so.
I see another student over there, too.
Welcome, oh.
Yeah. Hi.
Boy Scout project?
Yeah.
All right. And Lori, I apologize, I really, I stopped paying attention to your presentation because I kept envisioning Kevin in the owl costume. Are you, are you the owl? Let's not be.
Okay.
So, just again, to start off, some examples of living our mission. We just had actually 27 students in the district, named as National Merit semifinalists, 13 from Liberty, four from Olentangie, and three from Orange High School. Oh, I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? 20 National Merit and 27 commended scholars across the district. So as, as you know from past presentations, the National Merit semifinalists represent the top one-half of 1% of students' performance on the PSAT tests that we administer to all juniors. Those numbers have stayed fairly consistent here in the last, that last few years, so it's just a great, great job by those students, and congratulations to them and their families. We will be honoring them at the October 22nd meeting in October, I believe. Just signed all the letters. Again, just some more examples of living our mission. This is our Braves Bistro. Two of our schools, Olentangie and High School and Liberty High School, do a student-run restaurant to teach functional, functional skills to our students in SLCs. Patriot Pub at Liberty, they're a lot of fun. If you ever get an invitation come across through an email, I highly encourage you to attend. It's a great opportunity to interact with a very special population. We hosted for the first time a multilingual family school resource workshop. It was targeted to our students, our multilingual families looking for assistance with accessing all of our district resources. So it's the first time we held that event, and I commend Marty and his team for putting that on. But, you know, accessing district resources are difficult enough. If you have a language barrier, it's even more so. So I think this is really good, you know, and again, there's really just one reason our population is exploding, and that's the quality of our school district. People are, so of all, of all races, moving here for our school district, so. Krista and I had a great opportunity to meet with our Teacher Academy students. She actually rode on a school bus.
I'm jealous.
With the Teacher Academy students all over the district and gave a history lesson to the students about the overall, overall district. And then they came here, Mrs. Fiesel, actually, I'm sorry, was, came in on that afternoon also and talked about being a school board member. And again, this is just an example of one of our mentorship programs that gives our students an opportunity to explore a career, get some real life experience, find out if they truly want to be a teacher, or if they don't. And so, just a great day. And again, and just in brief conversations, I look forward to hiring some of them, or Mr. Meyer hiring some of them four or five years from now, so. We were awarded, an award from the United Way of Delaware County as the 2018 School Workplace Award. The organization brings together Delaware County around a common vision, a common agenda, and a common path forward to create collective stronger impact. So we're very appreciative of United Way for recognizing us for that award. Our communications department has launched an OLSD Instagram page, celebrating who we are, what we believe, and how we learn. So we've actually had really good feedback on this so far, and followership is growing. What are we up to?
About 132.
Yeah. So you can see, we, when we posted this, we had 102, so it's growing, and I think it'll continue to grow rapidly. Again, it's just spreading good news all throughout the district. Too many times, we get caught up on one negative thing that may be going on in the crazy world of social media. It's easy to focus on that, and I think we need to start focusing on a lot more things that are positive here than negative, so. Just to highlight one action item, it's actually your board action item. You're approving a resolution to authorize our new Director of Safety, Security, and Preparedness to possess a concealed carry weapon. We've been very specific in this resolution so as to not leave any doubt that this position will be the only position we're recommending moving forward, have the capability to possess a concealed carry weapon. Joe Swazey is certainly qualified to possess a weapon. He is properly trained, has met extensive credentialing in that regard, will continue to be properly trained. And moving forward, we've put this stipulation in as part of the job description for that position. So in the event we move on to a different person in the future, that will be a requirement for that position.
Mr. Rafe, did you see the school district that's getting sued because they were allowing their teachers to carry arms and they were not properly trained?
No.
Here in Ohio.
Yeah. I, I'll just stand on what, you know, again, as I always say, I, first person I call with any, will now be Joe in the future, but has been Sheriff Martin, and he said in very simple terms, harming teachers is the worst of every bad, of any bad idea moving forward. So I can tell you, in my conversations with our staff, they are very appreciative of the board's position on this matter. The vast, vast majority of them understand that's not what they're here to do. And then finally, just some important dates coming up. There's a long list. As Mrs. Patrick indicated, it's just hard to believe already that October 18th ends our first quarter of the school year. We have a couple of Teacher of the Year and Employee of the Year recognitions coming up at Orange and at Liberty High School. And then we have October 11th and October 24th is our board meeting. So with that, any questions? All right, thank you.
Mrs. Hatfield, your treasurer's report, please.
Absolutely. So good evening. We have a few things on the agenda that I'll go through first. We have our August financials. We are trending in our financials, pretty well on target from the May forecast. We have a slight uptick in our revenues versus our predictions, but as we've discussed in previous meetings, that's more of a timing issue that we had with our City of Westerville sharing agreement that's posted in July. Our expenditures are moving in slightly over on personnel and benefits. The vast majority of that is just the timing in our May forecast and finishing our negotiated agreements and having all of those assumptions reflected in our forecast. In our purchase services and supplies, we have some variances as well, but those are more reflective of timing issues of purchases. So we'll make sure that we include all of those updates in the October five-year forecast. We'll do the first read of that presentation at the October 11th meeting and have second reading and approval at the second meeting in October. As we discussed also with the House bill regulations, the delay in that reporting is scheduled for 2019. We can push that to November, should we choose to do that reporting, but it stays in October for this fiscal year. So we'll make sure that everything's up to date. We'll give you more information about where we think we're going to be, but still moving in a positive direction overall. We also have some appropriations and minutes on the agenda for standard approval, and several donations tonight that we would like to recognize. Of course, we're always grateful for our community and their support. They continue to participate in programs throughout the district. But the donations we'll recognize tonight are from the Indian Springs PTO for their donation of third-grade reading materials to Indian Springs. We had anonymous donor who generously gave football jerseys to Shanahan Middle School's football program. For Fanning and Howie, they don't. For Fanning and Howie, they donated scholarship funds to Berlin High School. Liberty Athletic Boosters donated funds for additional coaching with the girls' tennis team. And we also had donations from Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters for funding for freshman cheerleading coach and assistant field hockey coach positions. So we're very grateful for those donations and recognize them tonight for their time and financial resources that they share with the students. Also on the agenda tonight, we have several items related to insurance. Those are the, when we say insurance, we're talking about the benefit package that we offer our staff here in the district. We have our 2019 insurance rates for medical and dental before the board tonight. We under, we went through an RFP process, a request for proposals from both our medical and our dental carriers to make sure that we are able to offer those benefits at a competitive market rate and also serve our staff with a quality product that they can use and help enhance their experience here at Olentangie. Through that process, we looked at not just the cost of the items, but also the disruption. We reviewed the proposals with our insurance committee members and discussed some of the insurance information also with district leadership team, and then wanted to bring forward the following recommendations. So through that process, we want to recommend that we stay with Medical Mutual. They are our incumbent carrier that we currently have. They had the best options for us in terms of fixed costs or administrative fees were lower than the other two main carriers that provided presentations for us. And of course, the disruption is very minimal as they are our current carrier. We want to recommend Delta Dental as a new carrier for us for dental insurance. They provided a more cost-effective rates for us over the next three years and have, there will be some disruption in terms of network coverage, but very minimal compared to the cost of savings that we'll gain, or cost avoidance that we'll gain by switching and having those lower premiums. So the premiums that are listed on the agenda item for approval are a 6% increase overall to the medical. The rates that are listed are the total monthly premiums that we would pay. There's a board share and employee share component within those items, but that is the total that we're recommending. And then same with Delta Dental, that is the total monthly cost that is shared by the board and the employee. And the first year of their contract offers a 7% decrease in cost of premium. The other item that we have on the agenda tonight is the approval of an addendum for our insurance broker, Milestone Benefits Agency. They offer ancillary products to the district at reduced cost, such as our 1095 and Affordable Care Act reporting, variable hour tracking that we have to do to report that we are in compliance with the Affordable Care Act and folks are working 30 hours or less. And then reporting what insurance coverage folks have at the end of the year so they can turn in those forms to the IRS. And one of the things that we wanted to add to that list is Jelly Vision, which is a component that offers a artificial intelligence or interactive component to health insurance enrollment that allows the staff to go in and put in their personal information and get a cost-benefit analysis of the plans and programs that are available to them so they can make more informed choices about what's available and use their insurance in a way that suited best for them. You know, we always try to make sure that we answer our staff's question as we go through open enrollment. Our benefits coordinator, Susan, does an excellent job with that, and Milestone Benefits helps us with that, but we are a very large district and just can't get in front of everybody as much as we would like to. So this adds a component of support to staff to give them the opportunity to go through that on their time and with their spouse or anyone else that they may be looking at those programs with to help them make that decision. So that's what that amendment is about, is just to give us access to those programs that were originally in their contract that we approved in 2017. So with that, I will take any questions about those components on the, on the agenda
I just make a comment about the insurance rates is that when through, going through the RFP process, there's obviously big players in that providership. There was one major player who looked at our premiums or our rates, decided to not even bid or answer the RFP. And I, I've, I've a lot of contact with a certain community member who works for that organization, and he's always asking me about how do we get your business? And I, after I went back to him and said, well, your company didn't bid on it, he said, he went back and found out why. He said, there's just no way they could beat the rate we're getting. So that's, that's a good thing.
Right, right. I feel very confident after going through this process that we really are working with a partner that is helping us have a very good competitive, marketable rate and a great benefit for our staff. So we're very fortunate to really just reemphasize that for ourselves and continue to work in a, in a way that is effective for our community and our staff members, both being fiscally responsible but providing benefits that are useful and helpful for our staff. And with that, the only other things I would add are coming up from our department. We have, on October 1st, we will meet with our Finance and Audit Committee to go over the first reading for the five-year forecast. And we'll give them an opportunity to ask questions, dig into the details, walk through anything that they might suggest. And then on October 9th, we are having our Booster PTO training.
Oh, good.
So we'll sit down and, or invite folks to come in from our boosters and PTOs and talk to them about best practices, things that are coming up that they should be aware of in their, their roles. And then also bring in our insurance, our liability insurance broker and an attorney to help them talk through things that might be hot topics or new and upcoming topics or trip, things that might trip them up in their processes, to help them get better informed and have more information and a resource from the district to help support their activities. So those two things are coming up, and then we'll continue to work on insurance forms for the staff to help get them the information that they need about upcoming open enrollment, which will be in October and November.
Emily, the booster training, is that annually we do that? Or just because we've got a new high school onboard, or?
No, typically, we've done it annually. I will admit, we missed last year. We just didn't get it scheduled, which, you know, is an unfortunate scheduling issue that we had last year, but typically, we've done it three or four years running prior to that, and we want to make sure that we get it back on the calendar and offer that to the community. Because it's not just with the new high school coming onboard that brings people in, but there's also a lot of turnover just in general for boosters and PTOs as children age and, you know, their participation in different programming changes. Those folks that are serving in those, as treasurer and president and vice president in those roles will change with their students' activities. So we just want to make sure that we can get in front of them and offer as much support as we can.
Yeah, and just as a, you know, to touch on that, you know, technically, the boosters and the PTOs don't fall under us financially.
Correct, we don't, yes.
But you're taking this time to go over some do's and don'ts with them, to make sure that they are operating the way that they're supposed to be operating.
Absolutely. I mean, and it, they're, it's a great partnership, as you can tell from the donations, and we see those constantly throughout the year. Their vast majority of the time, they're supporting our students in a remarkable way. So, you know, anything that we can do to help get them the information that they need or give them resources and tools to help them, encourage them to stay involved and be involved in future projects is...
Because you've gotten, you know, requests for their financial documents, and you have to say, well, I'm sorry, legally, I do not handle those, so...
Correct. We don't handle their financials. They put together their own financial statements and have independent audits of their statements as they do not fall under our books, so to speak. So, you know, anything you can do to help, we're happy to be here and build that partnership.
To my fellow board members, who's attending the Finance and Audit?
Well, unscheduled, but she moved the meeting to the OEF golf outing, I believe.
Well, I'm not going to the golf outing, so I could go.
Well, I told her I would be there, but maybe a little late. Depending on what time to finish up.
Anybody else?
I can't make it.
So I can go?
Yeah, you're not, you're not...
I can't make it.
It's so much easier to attend that than try to read it all through on my own. We also have a policy meeting next Friday. Next Friday? The 5th? Isn't next Friday the 5th?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jack is eagerly awaiting that.
I don't, I don't think he is.
I thought it was, I thought it was on the 5th, your next policy.
Yeah.
The 5th.
The 5th.
Friday the 5th.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hatfield.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public participation this evening?
No, we do not, no.
Should I tease our students, see if they're still engaged?
They're done. They want to go home.
Okay, well, I have, or we have, one board action item, so I will entertain a motion for Board Action Item A.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield?
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hatfield, please present the treasurer action items.
Yes, please. I would like to present Treasurer Action Items A through G for approval, please.
So moved.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rafe, your superintendent action item, please.
Yes, I'd like to submit Superintendent Action Items A through F for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And I will now take a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second. Dave, Julie. There we go. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
That concludes tonight's meeting. I believe we are meeting here next October 11th. 6:00 PM.
We are.
6:00 PM.
Well, so...
Adjourned.